Okay, here's the way that we're gonna run this tonight. We're first gonna call on Heather Smith to set the stage as to the purpose of the session tonight and where we are with the special exception request for this property, okay? Then we're going to turn it over to all of you who've come. And the purpose of this evening is to give you the chance to hear information, to share information, to ask questions, to share your concerns, to let our Planning Commission members hear that, as well as the team from the development company, and for them to respond to that. If there are additional issues or questions that haven't surfaced and that our Planning Commission members would also like to contribute toward the end, we're gonna ask them to have that opportunity as well. And again, the development team can respond to it. The purpose tonight is the sharing of information and a greater understanding of concerns that you may have and questions that you want to have answered. We assume most of you probably live adjacent to or close by this property. We hope that there are some general residents that are here, but, and we hope it is a productive session for you. It's for your benefit that we have decided to have it this evening. Heather, would you like to kick things off?
Good evening. I'm Heather Smith and I'm the Service of Community Planning Administrator for the Town of Mount Airy. I want to thank everybody for coming out this evening. I want to thank Mr. Pank and the associates from McKenzie Retail. As Chairman Butts has stated, this is your forum tonight. We look forward to hearing from you. I'm going to give a very brief explanation as to where we are at in the special exception. Don't worry, I'm not gonna read the staff report. Have no fear. For the record, this is a special exception, case number MA A 1205, and the application was submitted on behalf of Pank Land LLC. It is seeking a special exception approval to utilize industrial rezoned land for commercial and retail uses over 65,000. Those of you who have viewed the project board see that there is proposed approximately 300,000 square feet of retail. As the Chair indicated, we are looking for your comments, concerns, suggestions, and feedback tonight. And I promised I would keep it brief, so I'm gonna turn it back to Chairman Butts.
Okay. You can ask any question or raise any issue that you so choose. Some of the possibilities might include the following. The location itself, pros, cons, concerns that you might have, perhaps in proximity to where you currently live. The zoning classification itself. Currently, this property is zoned industrial. The request is to change that zoning classification to industrial. If you want to make a comment-
No, no, no.
To commercial, rather.
No, we're not, it's not a rezoning.
If you wish to make a comment in that regard-
They're not asking to rezone.
Not to change the zoning, I'm sorry. A special exception request for the purpose.
To allow commercial, I mean.
To allow it, yes. Another possibility is the scale of the proposed development. What's initially been proposed is upwards of 300,000 square feet. Another possibility is the access and traffic associated with the property and the scale of this size. Another possible topic might be environmental concerns, if you have any question in that regard. Another possibility could be buffering, how and what types, okay, given what potential impacts might result. Lighting, noise, some of the characteristics of a development in this area. And anything else that comes to mind. Those are all possibilities, but again, it's whatever questions you have. And with that, we'll open it up to any comments that our residents and our attendants have. We'd ask you to come up to the mics so that everybody can hear you, and if you would give your name and your address, and we'll go from there. Who'd like to kick things off?
I don't think you're all good with this.
All right.
Somebody's coming from the back.
Here we go.
There we go.
All right, good.
I'm sick, so I'm sorry. My name's Peggy White. I live in Lot 1 of Conestoga Heights. I've lived there since 1981. My address is 999 East Ridgeville Boulevard. The one thing I'd like to thank the town right now for all the notifications, in about 1983 or '04, they tried to rezone Conestoga Heights to industrial. I never got a notice. I drug my son, who's now 30, and my 29-year-old daughter to all the people's houses after I missed the meeting. They ended up making it into, leaving it as houses, built houses. We've had a great time there. My son actually lives in a new house he and his wife built on East Ridgeville Boulevard, and my daughter bought a house in Conestoga Heights, so we're all down there. So I'd like to at least thank you all for notifying people now. It's come a long way in 30 something years. The thing that concerns me, living on East Ridgeville Boulevard in that amount of time, is that road is not equipped for access to this property. That's my one concern. But I would also like to see it go commercial. 10 or 12 years ago, I was in the town hall fighting Mr. Pank when he wanted to build an asphalt plant. I'm getting good at this. So that's, I'd like to see it go commercial. I just don't want, and I don't think East Ridgeville Boulevard can handle any more traffic. So.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
My name's Mike Curry, and I live on the Conestoga Heights Development right over here also. And I've got a concern in just the size of the project. Small, Mount Airy, small town. You know, this just seems like it might be a little bit out of scale for what the town of Mount Airy is looking for, at least my opinion, for what the town of Mount Airy is looking for. And then my other concern is what it's gonna do to traffic in the area. Right now, we all realize that this intersection, Twin Arch and 27, is pretty much maxed out ver and rush hour. And I just, I did a quick count across the street at Twin Arch, and there's maybe 650 parking spaces. What's proposed is 1,500. And one of the pass-ups that the town gave us tonight was a traffic study for a small school to be opened over here. And Item Number 11 clearly states that that intersection is pretty much maxed out as it is right now for just what we have. So first, I think it's too big, and second of all, traffic, where are we gonna do? I mean, we're talking major, major reconstruction, I'm assuming of 27, to ever make this even plausible. Again, scale and number of vehicles, that's my concern. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
I'm Jane Thorne, and I live on Conestoga Heights. Thanks to Ms. Peggy and her efforts, I'm her neighbor now. We're gonna have a single-family home without her. My concern, as I said, is the access. I wouldn't mind a bike path. I prefer commercial, but the big thing is, is we have all these empty buildings now. Why build more? And we don't need, you know, we've got Super Fresh is empty, we've got Blockbusters is empty. Before we go and build this huge thing, we should think about filling those spots, you know? It's my big thing. But I would prefer it commercial, and I wouldn't mind a bike path for whatever would be there. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Russ Pavlicek, 1405 Westwood Court, Mount Airy, Conestoga Heights. Regarding the plan here, I think that the general concept I don't disagree with, using the space commercially, I think was, beats an asphalt factory all the hell and back again, quite honestly. The biggest concern I have is traffic, living off of East Ridgeville Boulevard especially. I started doing the math just a little bit from some of the numbers I saw inside these reports. If East Ridgeville Boulevard is left open as an access road into the back of the complex, which I believe is still part of the current consideration, I believe it's still on the master plan for the town, even if that is not the main entrance, quote unquote, to the facility, if it were to take only 10%, let's say, so the overwhelming number will go to Twin Arch. At 10%, according to the numbers I've read here, I believe that's 600 trips per 12-hour day, that would be going down East Ridgeville. East Ridgeville, right now, is dicey enough as it is because it's a very local road and it has that wonderful 15 mile an hour dogleg at the top, which the town put in to facilitate Peacock Center, because it didn't used to be that way when I moved here. And I understand doing that because it would be good for business, but now, if we do the math a little further and consider, according to one of the, I think it's the school study, it said that they anticipated 25% roughly traffic going to and from south. What's south? Damascus and I-7. I would suggest that number's probably considerably higher instead of retail use, particularly something with a draw like Walmart. But be that as it may, that's 150 of those 600 additional trips going down East Ridgeville, if you figure 25%, who are the people? They're coming off the highway, they're going at highway speed, they're probably coming in through GPS. Because GPS, if you do the math, the shortest trip into this new center, whatever this thing's gonna be, is gonna be through East Ridgeville Boulevard. Even time-wise, I strongly suggest, and I don't have the math to prove it, but I strongly suggest that even time-wise, it's probably, will be calculated as the quickest entrance. You come down into East Ridgeville, maybe you negotiate the initial turn, the left turn onto the dogleg to go over towards Five Guys, but then you have the other one, the blind one, that then turns down again. That's the one that if you cross that line, you're going to be cut into the other lane of traffic. And frankly, it's dicey enough now, and we all know it's there. If we have potentially 100 to 150 people per day taking that road, who have never seen it before and are coming off a highway, this could be a major disaster. You might as well rename the area Dead Man's Curve, as far as I'm concerned. That is a big concern for me. Echoing, what I think Mr. Curry said, the traffic on Twin Arch is also snarlish as it is. And then I keep thinking about, what about from November 15th to January 1st? And if you don't know what happens in retail areas during that point, just head out to the Golden Mile in Frederick and just stand on the street corner, pray for your life for a while during that period. It's horrible out there. I really think that we have to have that consideration, that that's a massive increase of traffic during those six weeks. So I think the concept is good, and I just really am concerned about implementation, particularly in traffic both sides of the facility. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Good.
Hi, my name's Kevin Fournier. I also live in Conestoga Heights. My main, I had a question first. What is the difference between rezoning and a special exemption for this? Can someone answer?
I'm happy to. Phil, could I take your link? That's a really good question. A rezoning is the, the actual zoning is changing on the property. Mr. Pank is requesting a special exception in the industrially-zoned property, which allows the retail and commercial use. So the zoning would essentially stay industrial, then it will be a special exception use, so they're used permitted by right.
Okay.
If this were granted and built under the special exception, it would just be the permitted use.
Okay.
Okay.
Just like a one-time thing?
Right.
Do you want to do one versus the other?
I'm, I'm sorry.
How would you do one versus the other? It's more, I guess, a question.
That's what he's chosen to do. He hasn't applied for a rezoning. He, right now, the property is zoned industrial, so it's an allowed, it's an allowed special exception use, and that's how he's filed it. You have to ask Mr. Pank that.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay. You can do that if he's gonna-
Thank you, Heather.
I also have some concerns about the, you know, the overall traffic in the area. Being where I live, off of East Ridgeville, and that road, the gentleman described it pretty good, where it's, it's like a dogleg left and then an absolute right-hand turn that's blind because of the hedges that are there and the kids in the neighborhood. That's a really horrible way for just the 60 or so families, I guess, that have to go in and out of there every day. So I would definitely have concerns about that myself. Also, the size of the project. I mean, it looks like it's bigger than the whole center where Weiss is and the two, the two dealers and the storage center area, you know, so it really is a huge place. Personally, I'd rather have it industrial. It seems like it would keep traffic down. That would be my, you know, my idea. The last thing I'd like to say is wondering about the easement, you know, just exactly. To me, that, it's a big gully there. It would almost have to be a road that was, you know, up in the air. That easement would actually have to be, what would be the word for that? It would, you know, be-
A bridge or something?
Like a, like a bridge. It would actually like be a bridge or something. I don't, I don't know. So I'd have questions about how, what the easement would be, you know, how lanes and, you know, how big an in-and-out that would be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Scott White. My mother was up here, and I'm 8:06, East Ridgeville. So I'm halfway down on the right. I guess that on the Mr. Pavlicek's comments, my main thing is traffic and the, and I know it's not proposed, but tying in East Ridgeville to the center. I mean, I don't even, other than my nice sidewalks I have, I mean, I can't even push my kids up and down the road right now with, there's no pedestrian access to anything. In addition to that, I guess, what are we actually using this space for? I mean, I grew up riding dirt bikes back there, so I think a commercial shopping center might be a better use than what it's being used now. I wouldn't want anything like outlets or anything like that, outdoor restaurants, I mean, noise level stuff. I don't know. I mean, I guess in addition to a nice big square building on a, on a board, like, what are their proposed uses for stores and stuff like that? I guess that's about it.
So that, that's a good concern. You actually raised that Ridgeville, its lack of sidewalks forces people to walk in the streets where there's be a potential lot of traffic.
Yeah, even that, I mean, I guess at the top too, where the blind turn is, I mean, I won't push my kids up the street. I mean, I have sidewalks just, like I said, I've told Barney in the past, I'm kinda glad I did put them in, but they go nowhere, so.
Barney. Thank you.
I mean-
I live at 1516 Levalle Court, right off East Ridgeville Boulevard. I'm just gonna reiterate the same concerns that just about everybody's brought up here. Our little court is about 11 houses, and there's 20 kids, all elementary school age. There's a bus stop that stops right there for all these kids to get picked up at. And there really is no sidewalks to get anywhere. There's no infrastructure there to support more traffic coming down the road. I have a three-year-old and a five-year-old. I enjoy walking up to Burger King with them. I'm terrified to do that now with that corner. We have to walk across the street and walk through people's yards. With another 600 cars or 100 cars, another 50 cars, it'll be a big concern of mine to walk my kids safely up and down that street. I don't believe that that access point should go to Twin Arch Road, let alone go through a commercial center. I think that will create a ton more traffic. And in the future, once people that do live up on Twin Arch Road, I know this is being selfish, once you realize that that is a cut-through, many people are gonna go to their homes through East Ridgeville Boulevard. If they're coming from the south, if they're coming from Damascus, coming off 70, they're gonna get off and take that first right to avoid the next light or the next traffic jam that's gonna come up at Twin Arch Road. So I hope you reconsider that access point from East Ridgeville. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dave Pyatt from 705 Park Avenue. And I talked with a few members of the Planning Commission before the meeting about the special exception process. And I was a little confused. I was council liaison to the 2003, 2004 master plan update. And as I recall, there was some discussion about the rezoning, and I know one resident mentioned that it was, there were other applications, but as I recall, it was zoned industrial without too much discussion because the surrounding property was industrial. When Dr. Fool and Mr. Stevens had their property annexed in the 1980s, early 90s, I was just starting on the council then. And one half was residential and about 250 acres was industrial. So they were just dovetailed into this 250-acre parcel, so that was an easy case to make, as I, you know, as I recall. Now, what I, what I'm hearing is, it's that this is being downzoned because it would be, it is already legally zoned as industrial, and to some extent, it would be downgraded to commercial. But what I've heard, and I had the same thoughts, is that the impact to the town, particularly to the roads and the traffic, is much more severe as commercial than it would be as industrial. Because you could, you know, you have this 250 acres or so and all those projects out there that has a certain volume of traffic. That's not too bad. I mean, it's not great. But now, all of a sudden, you're impacting it with this commercial slash downzoning. But in reality, the impact on Twin Arch Road and what I've heard is that it's not likely that the road would get through Conestoga Heights on, and that area is already congested. So I can't buy the argument that this is a downzone. I think it's a significant upzone.
Who said the word down? Mr. Pyatt, who said the word downzone? Because we haven't used that word.
Well, whatever, whatever it is. It should go through the master plan process. It should be requested as a rezoning, even though, this is being finessed. I don't know how else to say it, because nobody here has a say in it. It goes to the Board of Appeals, and they're, they're gonna be confused, and there is no, you know, no details. This is like, here, here, you know, to the Board of Appeals, this, this thing is coming over, what are you gonna do? If you guys can't answer the questions or really get your hands around it, I don't see how they can. And it could be, you know, it could be approved, and it could, it will have a serious impact on the community. I mean, I just think, I know other attorneys or consultants have argued that you don't have to be an attorney to understand this stuff. I mean, I've been on the, you know, around this for long enough to know that this just doesn't pass the, you know, the smell test or the yahoo test. And I just can't buy this argument, whether you call it, whatever, whatever it is. It should be requested to go through the full zoning process. It should go through this Planning Commission and then go to the council.
Well, but with all due respect, Mr. Pyatt, when a petitioner comes to the town with a specific request, we're not asking them to come with a specific, we're not telling them how to come at us with it. He chose to come to the town with this request, and we have a process we have to follow. This isn't, this is the way Mr. Pank has, has chosen to proceed. He has not asked for a rezoning.
Well, that's how, that's how he's argued the case.
Well, as we're going through the master plan, the commission can talk about the zone, but if a petitioner comes to us with any kind of a plan for their property, we have a process that, and this is the process for this type of request. I don't see any problem with our Board of Zoning Appeals getting confused. I think that, I see them here tonight. I think they're gonna spend just as much time being educated on the subject as, as we would.
I still don't believe that the, the definition, I still believe it's a upzone because of the impact on the community. No matter whether it's an I or a C, it has a significant hit on the community, and that's a positive increase. Therefore, it can't go through as a special exception. I know Mr. Pank may have wanted to do it, and if I were in his shoes, I would try to do that too.
That's definitely one of the considerations, though. Nobody has said downzone.
Somebody's gotta say you can't do this. I mean, is it, you guys is our town attorney, who's the one that renders a legal opinion on this? I don't know, Heather.
We're just at an information gathering stage, though, at this point.
Do you, do you do it? Who says that this process is legally valid?
Well, with the, because the retail and commercial uses in excess of 65,000 is, is an allowable or pursuable special exception in the industrially zone, it's legislatively predetermined that it is legally compatible. So by the council-
By who? Who was?
Well, when the council allowed the code to be modified in the industrial zone to allow petitioners to apply for this proposed conditional use, it's, it was legislatively predetermined to be compatible within the industrial district. And I think what you're getting at relates to the evaluation of the general standards, that in this particular case, that what's being requested does perhaps, in your opinion, create more of an intense use than the industrial district should call for. So I, I think you're, you're one point-
But isn't that, I mean, that's not my, I mean, it's my opinion, but it's everybody's opinion in the room, I believe that it is.
Right, and, and-
And the facts, the facts support it. The traffic study does support that it's an upzone. Now, the question is-
Let's use the word intensity, because it doesn't change the zoning. I, I think that's where there may be a little bit of a disconnect. So it, it doesn't change the actual zoning of the property, but it, in, what you're saying is the property changes in intensity.
Well, suppose they had a project, you know, for a warehouse, that had 500 parking spots.
Yes.
And all that other stuff. What would happen then?
Well, that is a use permitted by right. If he were to use it as a flex space, he would not be going through the special exception process that would require a recommendation from the Planning Commission and then a subsequent approval from the Board of Appeals. He would simply start at the concept plan stage after he would go through a successful subdivision if he was subdividing the property.
But what I'm saying is, when you have a hunk of land that's 38 acres and it's zoned industrial for warehouses, and all of a sudden you say, oh, I wanna put in big box stores, a Kohl's, you know, whatever it is, you know, Kohl's, Home Depot-
You're changing the use, the form-
You're changing use, but, but in it, but in a more obtrusive way, and there's no debate, I mean, that's, that's fact.
There is, and that's what this, what we're doing now. They've had to apply for a special exception, and you're very versed in the special exception process. He applied for the special exception. It went to the Planning Commission. We did our analysis that's represented in the staff report. Ultimately, staff is withholding a recommendation because there are traffic concerns. We don't understand the impacts, other than we're assuming- We don't understand the impacts, other than we're assuming that they're going to be detrimental. We need to learn all those facts before we're ready to make a recommendation. Based on the February meeting, there were enough concerned citizens there that the Planning Commission felt, we need more community input. Uh, we, we want to learn the concerns, and that's the purpose of this community forum. And that's why you're here tonight. The next step is that the Planning Commission still has to do their analysis. They still have to provide their recommendation to the Board of Appeals. Perhaps they need more information to reach that determination. And then it goes before the Board of Appeals. And then, as you know, the Board of Appeals has to evaluate whether or not the applicant has provided the preponderance of evidence that they've met the burden as, you know, stipulated by the general and specific standards.
The only downside to that, Heather, and as you well know, the, the Board of Appeals can pretty much.
Dave, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Uh, just to jump in for a second, I think you were just trying to make a simple point, which is that, um, there are a couple of routes that they could have gone.
Yeah.
And the fact that they chose a special exception when we're right in the middle of our master planning process right now, you found somewhat suspect because the special exception process does not require that they go through the Planning Commission. Was that your point?
Well, I guess my point is a little bit more than that because the master plan process is a very touchy one. It's, it's, it's relevant. And this particular property, whether you call it a special exception or what, has more impact on the master plan than anything else.
Right.
And, and I guess what I'm saying is, in a, in a negative way, it's not going to help the traffic and, and what have you. I can't see why you can't re-figure this unless there's some legal reason why you can't. I mean, does, does that mean you have to go along with this special exception request? Or can't you deny it on the reasons that I just stated? You know, even though it may be in the code. I would, I would, I would say prudent government. And I mean, I, I guess I live across the street, but prudent government wouldn't let this one just whiz by like this. I think you have an obligation to, you know, more or less deny this request for a special exception and do the job right. I mean, I don't know how else to say it, you know, maybe.
We're not letting this, we're not letting this whiz by.
No, we're not at all. That's why we're having this.
If I'm, as one of the council members on this commission, it's been clearly identified that there is a process that has to be followed. So as one of the council members, there is a process that we have to follow. That process has been defined for a special exception. Again, identifying that Mr. Pank made the decision to use a special exception vehicle, we're following that process. This body will provide input as to whether are we either approve or deny such consideration for the use or exception of this property. But that, in essence, is going to go to the Board of Appeals. So it's going to fall on the Board of Appeals to actually look at it, as Heather stated, and ensure that they meet all the specifications that they have to for submittal and falling under the code, which I don't know what the value is. So we're here to take the info, and I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, but to the letter of the legality, yourself being a past council member that actually voted on these things, we are following the process. So we can't arbitrarily just change the process right now because.
I, I guess I disagree that you're following the process because I, you know, I, there may be things that I'm not aware of, but I just, I mean, I can understand why Mr. Pank would want to do it this way. I would too, because it's the easy button way. But I think that our, our town staff and our town attorney and perhaps the mayor should weigh in on this and say, what's the deal? I mean, what's the legal basis?
They will have that opportunity.
Dave, I, I think you have made your point.
Yeah.
Which is basically that you, you believe that the more appropriate process for this would be the master planning process. Frankly, I don't know. Uh, I think we need a, no, I, I do think that that's probably the more appropriate way to go since it does have an effect a lot of things. But whether or not, um, there is a legal obligation for us to do it that way.
So you're saying that this legal interpretation would waive them from going through the master plan process? I don't know how else to say it.
I'm saying I don't know if legally they would be required to do that.
Has the, has the council made that decision, Scott?
The council has not made any decision.
So.
And to my knowledge, this hasn't been to.
This doesn't go to the council, no.
The town attorney either, has it?
So the town attorney hasn't even weighed in on this?
He has.
Not the specific question that you're raising, whether or not there would be.
No, not the specific question.
But when any special exception comes to the Planning Commission, it is our job to give a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and that is, that is the process. That's the legal process.
I would agree, but isn't it presumptuous to have this meeting and to go this far without having a clear understanding of whether that process is legally based or not?
That's a fair question.
I mean, that's, that's all I'm saying, that this may be, this may be a wild goose chase because we may not be able to do it.
Well, that doesn't make sense to me because when we have a request in front of us, our only option is to give a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals. There is nothing else that we can do besides give a recommendation one way or the other.
Is to state that you firmly believe that this is better served.
We can, but we have a lea, we have an issue in front of us that we have to, they have chosen their path. We have to address it. We can't ignore it and say, no, we feel like you should take a different path.
Well, isn't it, isn't it appropriate for the way to address it? To have the attorney give you legal advice as to whether this is appropriate or not?
Yeah, I think we're making this too complicated. I mean, you're absolutely right.
I mean, I, I just.
That we, as part of our process, can and should get a legal opinion along the way.
It, I mean, I'm, I just.
Shouldn't it have been done first? I don't know. It wasn't.
Well, I mean, you have a whole bunch of people here and, you know, they, they have talked about these legitimate concerns.
Mm-hmm.
And.
That's to help us make a recommendation.
Yeah. That's the purpose of this evening.
We don't want to make a recommendation without hearing from the people. It's going to impact.
Well, you can't give your recommendation to the Board of Appeals until the legal opinion is, is rendered by Mr. McCarron.
Yes, we can.
The legal opinion as far as the, the, the process of a special exception?
Yeah, I mean, this, this is.
But that's in the code. They're, they're following the code.
Right. We're simply following our town code. We're not, this isn't something that we get to dictate.
You're telling me that the biggest impact on the master plan is taking place right here, and you're just following some simple little thing in the code?
We can still address this.
You have no choice?
We have no choice. We have to, we have to.
We can still address this in the master plan process.
We can follow that A, B, and C.
I guess I disagree.
You've made your point.
Wow.
Well, I mean.
You've made your point, Dave. Thank you.
I, I think to make this simplified, because there might be other people, staff can end up talking to the town attorney to see if your concern has any validity and if there is any options to this commission to follow a different recourse. But currently at this time, you know, we're doing what we believe is correct based on the codification that is about.
Well, your, your, your interpretation. Who is, who is the most knowledgeable person here on the code interpretation?
I would refer that to our town attorney. So just so I'm clear, you would want the, the town attorney to render an opinion if the Planning Commission could hereby.
Give a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals?
No.
No.
To.
To, to say.
Consideration of the special exception and require that he go through the master plan process for a rezoning change? Is, is that, is that what you're trying to ask? Okay, well, I will definitely, I will ask that.
And maybe, and maybe that's because he has access to things that none of us have.
Are we all going to need? Sure, we, we could post that online.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Point.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Mike Rigo. I live in Conestoga as well, and I'd like to thank everybody for having this open forum so we can all get our points across. A lot of our community is here, and we are basically in this position. Just to let everybody know who may not know where Conestoga is, we're right on this point. So we kind of have a big impact of, and Mount Airy does do with the scale of what's going on with this particular project, whether it's industrial, whether it's commercial, whatever develops there is going to be a big impact on Mount Airy. What I'd like to see or just ask is, I boarded this small piece of industrial property already, and I have my hands full with it. I'll tell you that right now. Mount Airy, Conestoga, it's a hilly place. We're elevated. I actually look down into the industrial strip here. How this is going to be developed, I'm asking right now is, especially if you have parking lots, parking lot's going to need lighting, okay? You're going to have lighting everywhere to make it safe for anybody who's going to be shopping and/or whatever this is going to be developed as. I'd like to know what the buffer is going to be exactly. And I know we have wetlands that run through that border, this particular piece of industrial property. And of course, I think that's in that easement right there. I'd like to just know, for me being on an elevated platform with lighting, what type of buffer is going to be provided? So we already have the lights from the, the, the ball field and stuff like that. That's, you know, it's, it's in a distance, but it's, it lights up the, the sky. With this being roughly 200, 250 feet or whatever from my backyard, it's, I'm sure it's going to light it up being more than that. So it's just something to consider. And, uh, like I said, I think the traffic and everything's already been talked about. I do believe that East Ridgeville has already been deemed this is going to be a footpath now, if I'm not mistaken, off the master plan. So I don't think it's going to be an issue for traffic coming down the hill. So that's something that can be looked at.
That was their recommendation at their most recent meeting?
Yeah, the, the road's saturated. It's, it's a common sense thing. You'll see ways you come down. It's a sharp grade, bright sun, holding on yards. There's a lot of families. Uh, it's been well documented with the children and everything else. So I think that traffic is an issue. The infrastructure is going to have to be built up. But I think more than anything on this particular concept, I think it's the magnitude. It's just a big pill to swallow. You know, whether or not all the issues have been taken, somebody's done their homework and really done a beautiful picture on here, but it's just the, the magnitude is going to really have to be thought out. I mean, I thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Ryan Terman at 1720 Trussell Street in the towns of Mount Airy. Just a couple of quick things. Obviously, I would much prefer this to be retail than a asphalt factory, as everybody was saying before. If, if it is true that Ridgeville, um, does not become a, uh, access but more of a footpath, which I would agree is an access, you know, with the way that road works, it's not a, it's not a great location to put it in. Um, and I, just so you understand what I'm doing, I'm a general manager for 12 retail stores, and that's what I do. I hunt locations. I put them in. I, I would not want to be in this location because of how long it would take to access it. If you're seeing that location from 70, I'm going to get off of Route 70. I'm going to be like, how do I get here? You know what I mean? So if I look at it from that point of view, even going down Ridgeville, I would be like, how would I get here? Unless it was some type of pylon or some type of sign. Going down from 27 to Twin Arch, then you have issues. If you put it across from Century, I know just coming out of, um, Y's all the time, making a left turn out of Y's onto Twin Arch is hard enough. So if you have increased traffic, if this is your only entrance, I mean, you're going to have to put a light in. I mean, at a minimum, you're going to have to put a light in. Has anything with the town talked about possibly putting an entrance through the back of this location? Like through this area here, off of 27 and putting a light there?
That belongs to the fire company.
Right.
Actually, the Streets and Roads Commission did discuss that in our last, most recent meeting.
Right. Cause I mean, I, I think that.
That's a different property, so.
Yeah. I, I was just saying, or even accessing it through here, you know, because your traffic issue with Y's, if you put a light there and accessed it through this road here.
That was also discussed.
The only reason why I suggest that is, is that, again, working that retail type of job, that makes a lot more sense to me than going down further, so.
The only, can everybody hear me?
No, here.
No.
Sorry. That was, that, the connectivity to, um, 27 was discussed at the most recent Streets and Roads Commission meeting, which was, um, last week, I believe. The only issue would be that that is a state highway. And so any access onto the state road would be required to be approved by the state administration.
Okay. That's all I got.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to bring up an issue that hasn't already been cited? Go ahead.
My name is Lisa Martin, and I live at 1931 Reading Court. I had the luxury of being the last home added into the towns of Mount Airy. Um, I have grown up in Mount Airy all my life and went away to West Virginia for several years for school and did everything I could to bring my husband back to Mount Airy with me, and we ended up across the street. So, um, Mount Airy, our quaint little town, this seems way out of proportion for our small, you know, family oriented. Most of us have been here for so long. Uh, my other concern is, I am a Carroll County, uh, public school teacher. I don't teach in this area, but I know what it's like to come out of Century and Aaron off of, onto Twin Arch. That turn is massive, and it could be an accident waiting to happen. And how many of us are putting our children on a school bus when a retail store could have so much traffic going on at 4:35 o'clock when our kids are getting home? How many of us are truly going to feel safer with our kids on those streets? I mean, with my profession, I don't have children myself, but I couldn't imagine letting these little ones out of Pars in Mount Airy and expecting our parents to feel safe with those children there. So I wonder how much we've taken into consideration the impact of school transportation and these schools and these kids that play in these parks. What will they be doing when this big retail comes in with 1,500 parking spots to play in? You know, we have to take that into consideration also. Thank you.
Good.
My name is John Schonberger. I don't live in Mount Airy, but my wife and I own Mount Airy Mattress. And a couple of things I wanted to talk about, uh, from the gentleman that went on for some, some time about the process. So you folks just make a recommendation to the Board of Appeals, and then they make the final decision?
Right.
In regards to special.
How often do they override your recommendation? Or is it usually they follow your recommendation?
We have a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals who's here and would like to respond to that.
Okay, great. All right. The next thing is, in regards to the need, I mean, one of the reasons we located here in Mount Airy, quote unquote, a bedroom community, was there were a lot of mom and pop businesses. And that's kind of what we based now Sleepy's has opened, and it's hurt us. Now, we have a couple of big box stores. When I asked the gentleman from Mackenzie, you know, do you have anybody in mind? The answer, of course, is no. It's too early yet to know. But I don't even have a feel looking at these spaces. I mean, certainly if a department store opens and sells mattresses, it's going to affect me. And certainly if another, you know, type of a hardware store that could affect Ace Hardware, that affects the flavor of this community. And so the size of this and kind of the non-answer of what possibly could go in there, not non-answer, I don't mean to say that, but I don't know enough about big real estate to know what could go in there. Is that a supermarket? Is that a Kohl's? Is, you know, that's going to affect how much traffic comes in and out of there. A lot of talk in Mount Airy about water. Is that an issue with this size of an investment? And cost, you know, obviously, Twin Arch Road is going to have to be improved. There's just no question about that, if it's approved. Does the developer, Mr. Pank, is, do they pay for all of that? Or does, you know, I was real proud to see that Mount Airy, you know, submitted a balanced budget and, you know, there's a finite amount of money in the town. Is the cost completely up to the development company to do these improvements? Or does some of it fall back on the taxpayer and the business tax in Mount Airy? And so that was, uh, that's it. Thank you.
Great question. Roxanne?
Our member of Boarding Appeals is just going to come up and answer your question, sir.
My name is Roxanne Hemphill. I'm, um, happen to be the chairperson for the Board of Appeals at this time. In answer to your question, the Board of Appeals is the legal entity of the planning and zoning. We make our decisions on the evidence that is given to us through the planning and zoning. I've been on the board for about, let's see, three, four, I'll say 12-plus years. At this point in time, most of the recommendations, um, that the Board of, that the planning and zoning has given, we have not overturned their recommendation. We might add things, contingencies to the. We might add things, contingencies to that to bring back to the Board, to bring back to planning and zoning. And then also through this whole process, this is just step one. He's asking for a special exception. Once that happens, you know, there's tons of other things that need to happen as far as when it goes back to planning and zoning. But you have to get the process started. They have to come here first if they want to do this, and then it goes to site plan review and all of that stuff. In answer to the gentleman's question about the buffering, surprisingly enough, this special exception will allow more buffering than the industrial zone does now. So, those are just some of the things, I don't, I think that answers the question, but that's what happens. So, it'll go. Yes.
You said it would allow more buffering, would you put that-
Required or allowed?
It's required, it's required in that special exception, I'm sorry, it's required. Okay.
Thanks, Roxanne.
Thank you, Roxanne.
Very helpful.
Bill?
Yes.
No, once people are done talking, there's a question I'd like to ask of the residents that are here.
Who's next?
Who's next? Oh, okay, cool.
No, not after him.
Oh, after, okay.
There you go.
My name is Caleb Lang. I'm only 12, but I don't really live in Maryland anymore, but I actually have a question to an earlier statement about the kids going on the school bus home, having all the traffic, but that's 4:30 or 5 o'clock, that's rush hour, so, when everyone's going home, so, but I have gone to Mount Airy Middle School, my brother went to the high school here, so, and they get home at 3:30, 3:45, so rush hour really isn't a problem with the school bus.
Caleb, did you ask about the access that we talked about?
Oh, yeah, widening, I believe that widening the road would help with, with some of the traffic, because-
Is the board there that you're pointing to? I think you were talking about Twin-
Right here, right. Twin Arch.
Yep.
Yep. Twin Arch Road, right over here, has, right after the road, it's a double lane, right after that, it goes into a single. If you could widen that road to a double, and go, and I believe that would help with some of the traffic going through.
Clear.
Thank you, Caleb.
Very good, Kate.
I think he's our youngest speaker.
All right.
Hello.
Hello.
Please bend down.
Not going to make him bend down.
No, no, I'm probably going to, there you go.
I ain't going to go down there.
You're a second, city, you have the speaker.
Excuse me. Okay. My name is William Diggs, I live at 1420 Wooden Bridge Lane, I'm probably the dinosaur of everybody here for the residents, and most people will know me in the area as Dink. For East Ridgeville Boulevard, I think that road should be upgraded in a lot of different ways, not for the traffic, extra traffic, and for the path that goes back to the area you all talking about, it'd be nice to have it as a bike path, walking path, or whatever, for whatever you all decided to do with the lot, because you're going to do something with it eventually. There's no ifs, ands, and buts about that. But for the, for Route 27, you don't need to start there at Twin Arch Road and go north, you need to start at Twin Arch Road, go north and south, clear to 70, because if you all take, take time out and think about the events that goes on down here at Twin Arch Road, you can't get on none of the locations, especially at Carnival. You might just get out of your vehicle and walk, you're faster. That's coming across 27 from on the other side, you can't, you might just sit there and wait for three or four lights if you're third one, or fourth, third or fourth point in line. Same way if you're coming this way. I don't know what you all are going to do for all the extra traffic, because it bottled decks right now, without the extra traffic that's coming here. And so, for Twin Arch, when you get down here, where are you going to put your light? Which light? How many lights? Because you can't even get out of here even on rush hour. Sometimes you all go down here to the end down here and sit there and wait to try to come up to the light on a normal day. Same way if you leave there and go, 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 go down there to the next light. Try to get 70, especially if you're trying to get on 70, or any one of the locations. So, if you all talking about widening Twin Arch Road, you need to figure out who's going to pay for the widening of 27, because that's important on both sides. And that's like, like also, you need to also go have to put signs up out there that it's a non-through street, so don't bother to be going down there to Mr. Pank's place because it don't exist. And for the traffic, we have a problem with traffic down there now. This looks like a speed zone down through there, with, with, with the people that don't even live there.
On East Ridgeville?
On East Ridgeville Boulevard, yes. And, and that's like, some poor soul was backing out of one driveway down there, wasn't that long ago, he looked down the street, looked up the street, inside the back, out, there was some hedges, truck come up and hit him in the rear end. Well, you imagine how many more could happen? You know, and there's like young kids, we're getting more of them in the neighborhood, which they, they're, they're your future. I won't be around to see a lot of them, but then again, still, they're, they're everybody's future, kids.
Okay.
And more coming in the neighborhood every day. So, for the access little street, that little road back there, first thing I'll tell you right off the bat, if you all give, give him the ease, that's definitely off limits for any kind of traffic, and also, you need to figure out before you do that, you need to figure out who's going to pay for the widening of 27, both directions. And I, and also, the, are we going to be built in the future for, since we, we're a town, are the town people going to be built for some of the upgrades on some of these other roads now and from now on, because of the extra traffic? How about the water situation? You know, we're building a lot of houses over off of Buffalo Road, where do they get their water from? How about some of the other properties, the farms out y'all for 27 now, when they started building that, where are they going to get their water from? You know, everybody wants theirs first, but everybody else later ain't going to, they ain't going to want to hear the note. So, that's another thing. So, like I said, I'm like a dinosaur around you, I've seen a lot of things come and go, and all of them wasn't great. So, y'all have a good night.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay.
Dan, did you want to talk?
Yep.
I did.
Hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's more.
Yep, what, hang on, she's one. Yeah, let's let Sheila speak.
Hi, I'm Sheila Pyatt, 705 Park Avenue. When we moved here 35 years ago, Mount Airy was truly a small town. We had about 2,000 people living here in town, and to be quite honest, I didn't think I'd make it here a year coming from New York, this was a total shock to me. But here we are, going to be 36 years later. Our daughter was six weeks old when we moved here, and looking back, I am truly happy that she was, you know, brought up in Mount Airy when she was brought up. The town was small, people knew one another, it truly was a small town. Right now, when I look at Mount Airy, I see a mess, and it's getting to be more of a mess. We have a traffic situation, we have 27, which is a state road, they're not going to come and make it a four-lane road. We live three houses up from the post office, when we moved into that house 31 years ago, traffic on Park Avenue was not bad at all. Now, I can't even get out of my driveway, I have cars coming and going. If this thing gets built here, we, do we really need more commercial? We have the Peacock Center where Super Fresh is, sits empty. Why doesn't somebody come in, in that area and build it up? There's a perfect location. And yet, here we talk about another area. Twin Arch Road is a disaster, it's two lanes, we only have a one-lane bridge, who's going to, you know, widen that? And like I said, 27 is state-owned. We truly don't need any more commercial. I, I look at the plans, and I look, you know, and I've been told all the reasons why we need all of this, for tax purposes, I've heard the story, you know, like I said, for 24 years while my husband was on the council, so I've heard it all. And I see what Mount Airy has turned into. I go down South Main Street, I see, you know, we have Eliana Plaza, we have the bank, and that's a total mess. I see 27 driving there, total mess. Where Safeway is, we built the strip mall there, we have three restaurants there, we have a Starbucks, we have a bank. If anybody's driven through that area, they know what that is.
Sheila, I don't want to cut you off, I really don't, but is your main point that we don't want any more commercial?
We don't need it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Because I want to get everybody's opinion, thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you, Sheila.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to ask, a lot of you made a comment that you are okay with commercial here, and I got the feeling it was because you've dealt with the previous situation of wanting, them wanting a concrete company or something along those lines. My question to you is, and this is just for my, for our information, if those aren't the only two options, industrial does include a lot of other options besides an asphalt or concrete-type company. The industrial park that's back behind the gym, the Twin Arch Industrial Park, is another example of what industrial can be developed as. So, my question is, if those are your two choices, not, not concrete plant or large commercial, if it were an industrial park similar to the one that is currently in development at, behind Twin Arch, or commercial, do you have a preference still? Hey, Bill, I'm going to have a question for them.
You want a question as well?
I was going to wait. Does anybody?
Do you have any more questions you want to pose?
Would anybody respond to that? No, I have a question.
Let's do a show of hands.
Yeah, how about a show of hands?
Go ahead. So, okay, so a show of hands for, given those two options, who would still prefer commercial? All right, I'm, I, I don't know about size. And who would prefer to see an industrial park similar to the other industrial park? Okay, there are more hands for the industrial park.
A few more.
Okay.
You can put a church in the industrial zone, probably, okay? But that's not the use that necessarily would be, you know, it's, I am allowed to pick a host industrial-
Absolutely, and that, yes, to clarify, there are a lot of industrial uses that are an option, there are a lot of commercial uses that are an option. Under commercial use, there is a wide range of options as well, and, and we don't get to necessarily dictate what he brings forward. I just, what I was hearing, and the reason I asked the question, Mr. Pank, is because what I was hearing was a thought of commercial or asphalt, concrete, and like you said, there's a wide range of options. So, I needed to understand if they were just fearful of another concrete company.
All right, let's give Mr. Pank and people from Mackenzie a chance to respond to the questions and issues that have been raised so far, okay? Yes.
With two teenage boys, I can usually check my voice pretty loudly, so if it's okay with you, I'll just address you all. First and foremost, thank you.
Sir, could you, could you actually go to the mic, because we want to make sure everybody can-
Okay, got it.
Thanks.
I talk with my hands a lot, so I like to move. First of all, thank you. We have the opportunity to do these throughout the state, throughout the region. Our company, Mackenzie Commercial Real Estate, was contracted by the current property owner months ago. So, first and foremost, thank you all for your attendance, I'll try to make my comments short, thank you to the Planning Commission, to Heather for her staff. Where are we today and how did we get here? First and foremost, I would like to dispel some of the rumors, some of the emails, and just some of the general context. What you see in front of you, these materials, there is no set concept plan, there is no Target, there is no Kohl's, there is no Sam's, there is no BJ's, there is no Macy's, there is no J.C. Penney's. We cannot collectively market this potential project until it's ultimately approved and entitled. This is part of that process. So, that's first and foremost. There are no contracts to purchase this property, whether it's industrial, whether it's mechanical, whether it's assembly, there is nothing on the books. How did we get here then, and why are we here? We elected, we suggested at the recommendation of our firm, based on our research and based on our market awareness, that Mr. Pank versus a rezoning process, go through the special exception. It's very clear, it's black and white in the zoning code and the ordinance, that it is a legal process to request a special zoning when you are proposing buildings in excess of 65,000 square feet. Most critically, everyone, is why we chose that is because of this. Without these materials, you don't have to go through a comprehensive rezoning and do any of this. You just simply allocate for a property to be rezoned commercial. And we felt, because of the uniqueness of this property, because of where it's positioned, because of the creative opportunity that maybe a special exception would create, let's go via a special exception, let's get public input, let's get Planning Commission, let's get that process through. So, understanding that's the first question of why versus a rezoning. Most importantly is timing. Next issue someone brought up, please be aware, whether this has happened, whether it gets approved or not, you are not going to see a shovel on the ground for foreseeably two and a half, three years. That is how long it will take to go through the multiple layers of Planning Commission, Board Approval, Board of Appeals, Site Plan Review, Site Plan Development Review, Design Approvals, State Highway Administration, Maryland Department of the Environment, and a variety of the layers of approvals to go through to even develop this. If we weren't here tonight and we were trying to develop a mechanical warehouse or some type of structure for industrial purposes, it might be a year and a half. The other one is the utilities. We're still waiting for Mount Airy to coordinate, to give us some kind of idea of potentially how this property gets serviced with public water. So, there's still a lot of unknowns. So, you might say, well, Tom, why are you here and why are you doing this? Because of the economy, because of market conditions, we researched every opportunity. Mr. Pank is entitled by right to develop his property. When he came to us, we simply said, well, we're not so certain industrial is the highest and best used for the property, given the following. Well, you're surrounded by residential. Do you really want to put a heavy industrial use on this property? And could we actually take it to a next step and look at opportunities to do something that's more retail-based, community-based, commercial-based? Why do you see two big boxes? Because we had to show, most importantly, the potential density for the project, and just by comparison, the Twin Arch Shopping Center is about 357,000 square feet of gross leasable area, this plan is a little less than 300. So, just as a point of reference, because I heard a gentleman comment regarding the parking field. Very good comment. We, we picked these two uses because it requires us to show this abundant parking field. Reality, and I've been knowing this for 20 years, I've driven through every shopping center in Mount Airy, go to the farthest point away, and I guarantee you, some of those parking spaces have never seen a car. How do we know? There's no grease stains or oil stains, ever. I can assure you that 25, 30% of the parking will never see a car, maybe Black Friday, maybe December 26, 27. That's about it. So, that's the purpose behind showing these boxes. So, the next point, what is, potentially could be developed here? In the rendering board that many of you saw, we wanted to give you a sense of where current design trends are on retail. The idea is, this might happen and it might not, but what we will have, if we're granted this special exception, is the flexibility and the creativity to go make something more critical to the community. That brings up the next one, traffic. Folks, very clearly, whether this gets industrial, whether it gets retail, there will be some road improvements, Twin Arch Road and to the adjoining intersections, hands down. I couldn't put a self-storage facility here without improving Twin Arch Road. We will have to go through that process with Heather's staff, the Planning Board, the Planning Commission, the Board of Appeals, ultimately, State Highway Administration. I can't- I can't talk to the gentleman regarding the Route 27, that's SHA, but I can assure you that that is a major layer of the process. You will see inequivalently an intersection, a Twin Arch Road, of where this property intersects. No question. You will most likely, from experience, see a widened Twin Arch Road. You will see curbs, you will see gutters, you will see landscaping. That's all to be determined years from now. But understand, it's that layer, it's that part of the process. This is simply getting Board of Appeals does not entitle us to do this. It entitles us to seek the ultimate approvals of utilities, roads, lighting. Good point, to the gentleman who had a question regarding the elevation changes. There is the requirement under the current zoning ordinance that we have a minimum of the special exception that we have seeked, 100-foot buffer, 100 feet. Point of reference, I believe this building's about 120 feet in depth, just counting ceiling tops. We're showing nearly 300 feet from what we call the most critical, most sensitive community component to our adjoining neighbors, the retail, here on Ridgeville Road. Let's go ahead and make this the widest areas possible to minimize impact. As you all know, this is heavily treated. We've got another 100 feet to the north of the property. We've carved out the east end of the property simply to maintain that 100-foot buffer and parking. And then we've got the natural interstate buffer as well. We're maintaining trees, we're going to be required to replant. And as you all are well aware, the Maryland Department of Environment, every time you take a tree down, you typically plant two or three. So you're going to see some substantial things. Regarding the lighting, the elevation is a very good point. I'm not an electrical engineer, but I will tell you from experience, there are technologies available that allow us to focus candle wattage downward and minimize ambient lighting. Ultimately, the gentleman that lives here sees something? Yeah, you very well might, and you're most likely going to see a very small production of that light, because light bounces off of concrete, it bounces off the roof of the buildings. We can minimize that with some current technology. We're not even at that discussion. Two years from now, ultimately, when we submit a plan, we're required to submit lighting plans and landscaping plans. Those things will be thought through. We will all come back here at one point in time in that site design and development process to address those issues. You'll probably see a little bit more exaggerated elevations. The next thing's, the community connection, the bike path. Absolutely. As you all are well aware, you've lived here, we've got some topography challenges. It's very hard to create bike paths that have 32, 35-foot ravines to go up. I wouldn't want to push my child down, nor up. Getting a little old in age. The things regarding that is, we want to address some of those things to really create something unique. Most importantly is the access. Point well taken. Connection to Ridgeville Road, I've driven it twice, I've seen it. I was shocked that there's no sidewalks, or how that happened, but that's just part of the process that ultimately growth and expansion will go through. As you can see in our concept plan, we don't show that connection. And that is something with this Planning Board's input, your input, and Heather's team, we will ultimately follow their lead. They require it, they don't require it, we'll address it. Conceptually, we felt it was probably not the most appropriate. We are not seeking any relief. We are not seeking any participation by the town, by the county. This is a completely arms-length, third-party development. When this bike gets developed, 100% of it will be third-party. We can't put a shovel on the ground and get a building permit until you bond every inch of road improvements, every inch of landscaping, every inch of utility infrastructures. All that has to be bonded, that will be the developer's expense. The positive is, is by doing such, and that it's completely third-party, keep in mind the economic impact. By point of comparison, our research in the fall of last year, we did not see this site for industrial. Ultimately, a 50-acre tract could accommodate a half a million, 600,000 square feet of industrial space. By general rule of thumb, that might employ 30 people, 40 people in today's economy, simply because of technology and production. We are able to create an opportunity that has a little bit more higher economic impact, will probably have in a neighborhood of 160 to 200 jobs. Don't hold me to that, because we don't know the end users here. The last thing is the actual footprints themselves. Our idea is to create something that's a little softer. One of the things that you will see, and unfortunately, we're not at that level yet, is in the existing shopping centers, and one of the young ladies asked me about stormwater management. We don't build these large, vast pits that are surrounded by fences and ultimately eight-foot of weeds. Can you all picture what I'm referencing? Back in the day. Under the new Maryland Department of Environment and state recommendations, you actually do bio-retention facilities. We're required not only to manage it, but to retain it and treat it. You will see a substantive difference in any commercial development, not retail alone, not office alone or industrial, but how that management will happen. What am I referring to? Is that most of those islands, and there'll be areas dedicated in any of this site plan that show more green space. They actually are culverts that are treated with certain type of vegetation that create retention and filtering of stormwater management. You have to treat it on-site, you have to filter it on-site, temporary reserve it before it's discharged. You will see a substantive amount of green space on this site plan, whether this is industrial, retail, office, commercial, or other. So be assured, this will not be a sea of parking with just completely asphalt and curbing. There's going to be breaks to that. So aesthetically, we can assure you that it will be very inviting. Next steps, again, we are a long ways away. We have embraced the opportunity to seek the special exception, unlike the classification of a rezoning, because it allows us to prepare these materials, it allows us to get with Heather, allows us to sit in front of the Board and get their thoughts, as well as get community input. That was the sole purpose. It was not Mr. Pank's commitment of simply following a plan and developing industrial. It's what is the highest and best use. One of the things that led us to this, we are not on a wild goose chase, we are not trying to finesse anything past you. Our research showed that there was approximately somewhere in a neighborhood of $185 to $200 million a year in consumer expenditures leaving Mount Airy for amenities outside your trade area. It's well documented. Our thought was, well, if we know that number, and we look around at some of the retail that's somewhat antiquated in design, maybe this could work. Give us the opportunity for creative and flexibility, and we'll go see if it happens. If we were here two years ago today and I was sitting here submitting a site plan, we would not be talking. In this economy, we would not be even planning this. But looking ahead, as this community grows, household size, family expenditures, and new housing starts, there's going to be some need. Now, whether it gets backfilled with the current vacancy in the market, we might be dead in the water. But it's creative capability and flexibility, it's really what we're seeking. The last thing, talked about traffic, talked about intersections, oh, the current traffic study. Someone referenced the one to the, I believe, Goddard School. That is not ours. I'll publicly state this, that traffic study was specific to, I believe, an 8,000 to 10,000 square foot childcare center. Folks, we are not here to represent that that's even close to the traffic study that's going to be created by this. That is, again, part of that process. Here's the challenge. We have no means right now, without tenants in place, without transactions in place, to show State Highway Administration and this town a traffic study that accurately reflects what we're ultimately going to build. There is a difference between building restaurants, boutique shops, or service tenants. They all have different traffic impacts. So until we have a merchandising plan that we can justify uses, scope of uses, density of uses, then at that time, we will prepare a very detailed traffic study, which is public record, and it'll be part of that site planning, design, and approval process. Just to give you a little education on that side. So talked about everything, we certainly appreciate it. Hopefully, we've addressed, I've got a great list here. We'll be hanging around, so go ahead.
I think there may be a couple of questions from some of our commission members while you're up there. Let's give them a chance to add any questions that haven't been addressed so far.
So I'm going to ping on staff, just because I'm a numbers person. With regards to the size, just to give people a comparison, and I'll look to Heather for this, you had mentioned that it was comparable to the Twin Arch Shopping Center area, but I think, if I'm mistaken, it's more comparable to the Walmart in the Safeway Shopping Center.
I may have used the wrong name. It's not Airy Shopping Center.
So I want to make sure everybody realizes that, from perspective, if you take those two areas, Walmart Shopping Center and the Safeway Shopping Center, and plop it on this property, that is the exact same size. So I want everybody to have that idea between the parking and the buildings.
Walmart itself is 102.
Right, Walmart's 102. So I mean, I just want everybody to realize what you're talking about for space. The second point...
Does that include the pad sites also?
I believe...
I think it's 350. It's 350.
Yeah.
So fairly.
It's very comparable. I mean, if you literally take the map and you drop it in the space, it's almost the exact same. Secondly, one point was, the little access road that's on the side of the property, unless I'm mistaken, we actually have either a water or a sewage pumping plant that's right there. So I just want to point out to everybody, that little tail that's coming off the left of the property, a lot of people, I mean, I first did it too, think, oh, that's an access road onto the property. The town actually uses that, and we have a little station that's right there and a little house. So I want everybody to realize, that is not a throughway for the general public to get onto that property. Town uses that to access our own infrastructure.
Who else had questions?
And to address the process real quick, you guys, just so there's no more confusion, this step is just to go so that we recommend to the Board of Zoning Appeals whether they can have this special exception or not. Once that is done and decided, if the Board of Zoning Appeals says yes, then things start to come back to the Planning Commission as far as a concept plan, and we work with them on how it's going to look and what the property's going to look like, and the aesthetics that he talked about, the buffers, the lighting, all of that. That does end up coming back to this Board and getting decided on.
I have a question about the water, the water use, as a couple other people mentioned. So the general standards for the special exception require you to explain how there will be an adequate water supply. Well, there are or can be, an adequate water supply are or can be provided for the use, but in your comments, you did not address that very specifically. You indicated current available access is located within or adjoining the property for, okay, for public sewer stormwater management. Public water service can be provided, subject to the pending expansion of allocation to the town of Mount Airy. So I'm not sure, I guess my question is, what did you mean by that?
Currently, there is no available water capacity for this use.
Right.
And preliminary meetings with Heather and some of her staff, is our impression, our understanding, that it is something to be decided or basically elaborated on in the coming 16, 18, 24 months, that ultimately, I believe Mount Airy is trying some additional well drills or locations. So we're not here to represent that, we're simply saying that we believe there's easements in place one day if public water was ever available, and capacity.
Okay, so it's not your assumption that the town will go looking for additional water to make sure that...
It is not.
...for this place? Okay, all right, thank you.
Leslie, if I can add on to that, there's an... I normally don't need a microphone. Very loud voice. That's a very important distinction. And at the special exception process, we are not guaranteeing that there is, or saying that there's an actual allocation of water. We're simply stating that there is the ability, once capacity does become available, if it becomes available, that that can actually be extended to the property. The Planning Commission, under Chapter 25, under the Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance, is the governing body of the adequacy of public facilities. Our capacity and allocations will take place at the development review process, not at this time. So that's the distinction. It's a very important distinction.
Anybody else have any?
Oops, Bill, I'm sorry.
Heather, would you make the same, would you say the same thing with regard to the road improvements in the Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance? That road improvements or traffic impacts would be addressed at the site plan stage, or need to be addressed at this stage?
I would not be, and I have not, as you know, I've been very emphatic about the traffic study now, because that actually has a direct correlation to the intensity of the project and the impact on the community. We need to understand the impacts of the traffic and mitigation of traffic congestion to understand how Twin Arch Crossing may be widened, or how 27 may be expanded. In my opinion, in my analysis of the general standards and specific standards, we need to know that now, before we can make any further determination that it is consistent with the master plan with its intensity. I'm sorry, with its intensity.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, Gary, do you have anything?
Nope.
All right.
If I may, just real quickly address Heather's comment regarding the traffic study. As an industry usual and customary practice, traffic studies are done once a merchandising plan is completed and a site plan is actually in the application stage or process. It's very difficult to do a traffic study with potential use, when in fact, there are dramatic differences between one user to the next. And it would be unfair to represent to this Planning Commission, to this community, if in fact, today, we find a use that ultimately is higher. So 16, 18, 24 months from now, that traffic study, usually and customary, is part of the actual site plan submittal in the development and design process. Because by then, we will know uses, or the lack thereof, or potential uses. It's just, it's infeasible to do it today, other than to simply represent 295,000 square feet of general merchandise. Because no one can give you a scope specific to a project of that generalization. So that was our objective, is that as a condition of any kind of site development plan, a traffic study would be completed, it would assess all the infrastructure allocations, it will address issues not just controlled signalized access points, but it will address widening, it will address turning movements, and it will address outwards of probably every bit of a mile, mile and a half. We do a traffic study today, it's simply going to address Twin Arch Road. Well, we can simply say, Twin Arch Road will have to be expanded. Maybe in just by theory, there is a difference between the practicality of what the law requires and operationally. We have projects to where road improvements were never required, but because of the uses we've put on the site, we went ahead and did the road improvements, unbeknownst, unrequired. That scenario can happen. It's going to have to happen, because the developer of this property will never land the type of uses without correcting whether it's required by law or not. Just operationally, it doesn't make sense. So just to address that, okay?
I think Heather's concern, Heather, correct me if I'm wrong, is that, not that the developer would not be required to and would improve the road system in accordance with what is required based on the traffic impacts, but that whether those road improvements would be consistent with the master plan. For example, say your traffic impacts would then require a six-lane road, six-lane highway on 27. Does the town of Mount Airy want a six-lane highway on 27, and would that be consistent with the master plan? I think that's the issue.
You're absolutely right, and it may not be conducive with, as this master plan evolves. So in theory, we were kind of hopeful that we would follow on the adoption of a master plan to address that as well. It's a great point. Thank you very much, everyone.
One more thing.
Oh, please, go ahead.
At what point do you, and after the point that you're going to tell me, does the Planning Commission still have input on influencing the footprint, big box versus little things? And something else I want the Planning Commission to think about is, even if it's not two great big stores, and it's smaller stores, I can tell by looking at those pictures, that I could not afford to put my store there. And these are still going to be smaller national names coming in, and it's going to make the Food Lion Center, as you put it, antiquated, and make that property less valuable, less conducive for people to get to. And so it doesn't just change this, it changes the whole town and the flavor of the town. And those are beautiful properties, and these guys do great work, but it's the work, isn't the work that everybody in this room wants to see come to Mount Airy with a bigger footprint than it already has? Because I know, and I don't quite understand, it strikes me as a little bit too vague, that you, what'd you say, $200 million going out of Mount Airy for need that could be satisfied with this. You must have in your mind the type of business that are filling your space and are going to go here. And I would venture to say that the majority of them are either nationals, chains, things like that, that can afford your rent. Because I cannot. And so when you think about that, even though it's not a Target and it's a 3,500 square feet store, it's most likely still going to be a national that can afford those square foot prices.
The best way I can address that is by your own emails. We have received inquiries or recommendations, and the best one I'll use to you in comparison. We've received several inquiries as can you get Target to come to Mount Airy? Don't know. I don't have water yet, first and foremost. But most importantly is, is the Target footprint?
What's the highest value for you? Two Targets?
Nope, actually, our, the best value, because there's not been an economic cost analysis developing this site because we could very well get to the point based on topography, retaining laws, stormwater management, road improvements, signalized intersections, that it's just completely cost prohibitive based on what market will bear in rent or general economics. You're a retailer, you know. You can only pay so much in cost per square foot based on your ratio of sales. A Target footprint will not fit in the vacant super fresh. Won't happen. Could they tear it down? Don't know. Could they accommodate it by expanding it? Don't know. That's not for us to decide. Simply is that we're trying to show an opportunity to someone like Target. The other one was Kohl's. Received another one this evening. Go get Kohl's. Don't know for sure. But the reality is, as a retailer, as you're well aware, you located where you are today based on code tenancy and traffic. We're most likely going to have one of them. I would love to be able to bring that type of retailer to the marketplace because you all are shopping up the street at that retailer. And we know that for a fact. And then surround it by some of the mid-sized junior-type anchor tenants that are in the market, and then take it to the next ratio of actually boutique and local shops. No retail project works successfully unless it's basically a third, third, and a third. Third national anchor retail, a third junior mixed retail, and a third local. Look at every shopping center in the marketplace, and they're pretty close to that ratio. Little off, pretty close. Is this ultimately the Disney S plan? It is not. It is simply a reflection to create that vast parking field because we really wanted to cipher through all of your comments that this parking is pretty comprehensive.
So my question is, at what point do you have to lay down?
We will have, as, as part of that site development submittal, we receive the appropriate approvals, the special exception that grants us the opportunity to do boxes in excess of 65,000 square feet in an industrial zone property. We will then take it to the next step and say, who are the merchants? And then based on that concept plan, submit to this Planning Commission for the final site development and site plan review process. Absolutely, all the way to the pedestrian area, sir, to where the park benches are, to where the lighting poles are, to where the stormwater management is, to the radius of the turning movements, to where our shipping areas are and how it's signed, how it's lit, things of that nature that everybody's going to have an impact on. They're going to have some say. So it's at that process. This is not to be represented, that it will come back in two years, and that's what we're building. Doing it 20 years, never seen it happen.
Can I, one of the things you asked, and I appreciate your concern. You're one of our mom and pop, so to speak, stores. We do not have the ability to dictate what a property owner brings in to their property. We have no power to say they can or cannot bring a specific retailer as long as it meets the criteria for that zone. So if a big box wanted to come and the retailer wants to rent to them, that is purely up to them, and we have no say in that. But we do have the same concerns. At our last meeting when they proposed this to us, I was one of the people who said that I was concerned that something like this may detract from our downtown Main Street and some of our mom and pops that survive there. Even over at the Twin Arch Shopping Center, IHOP, when that was approved, the dry cleaners is being moved down, and there is some concern over their survival. We don't, whether we're concerned or not, though, we have absolutely no say in that. That is completely up to the owner of the property. All we can do, as this is developed, is work with them. We do have the ability to work with them on how the, how it will look. Let's say if Kohl's or something were to go there, or a Super Walmart or whatever, we can, they have to work with our design guidelines and how the outside looks. But we can't say they can't have a Kohl's or that they can't have 10 more Italian restaurants just because we feel we have enough. That's not up to us.
If I can just, one thing too, and I kind of pointed this out the last time, and I know a lot of the people here were not when, available when I made the comment. But just because you see two boxes on this drawing right now, that is not the final concept. I mean, there was a couple ideas tossed out. It could be, if you go down, I don't know who goes to Annapolis down here, but if you go to Annapolis Harbor Center, it is the same size capacity, square foot. And essentially, it's a big horseshoe for buildings with multiple types of stores in it. So that is just one other context of design that they could put on here for commercial retail space. It could be a whole bunch of individual stores that are separated by parking. Again, this is up to them and their design and the site plan that they would bring forward that we ultimately, as a commission, would have to prove. But we can't say you can only put two boxes or you can put 50 boxes. It's going to be up to them, what they bring forward to us, and whether it meets the guidelines or not that are established.
I had referenced the town survey at our last meeting, and I just, there are three town survey questions that I did want to bring up. And I was misquoted in the messenger. And I know that reporter is here tonight. One of the questions in our town survey that I had referenced at our previous meeting, and I'll read it from the survey. It says, "If you would like to see additional businesses, where should these new businesses be located?" The top answer, with a 62% reply, was concentrate in existing commercial areas. The second answer was identify new answers with only 27%, and no additional businesses needed was 12%. What I had, I was quoted in the messenger as saying that I did not believe our residents wanted any more commercial, and that is not accurate. I support commercial development, and I support, and I do not believe our residents don't want any more commercial development. What I was saying was that our residents had stated they wanted it concentrated in existing commercial areas rather than identifying new commercial areas. So I wanted to make that clear. One of the other questions in our survey was which of the following kinds of businesses should be expanded in Mount Airy? The number one response with 59% was restaurants. Number two was movie theaters with 55%. And number three was small retail stores at 26%. And that comes before large retail stores. And that was one of the other things that we are concerned with is we, we have a, the survey that we did was a historic response rate, over 40% of our residents. So we do want to respect this. Small retail is what our residents have said. And the final one was select the following statement that best describes your preference for the future of Mount Airy. And the number one answer with 68% was, "I support limiting growth to maintain a small-town community." So those are some of the things that are on our minds as we're talking about this, just so you guys know.
I might add that in the 2011-12 Comprehensive Community Needs Assessment, there were, again, questions that were asked about the types of businesses and commercial choice that residents would like to see. And those results were very, very complimentary and echo the results from the 2007 study. Those are still available online at the BeLocalMountAiry website, if you want to go check those out. But totally concurred with the findings back in 2007, 2008. Are there any other questions or any other comments from, yes, sir?
I have two questions, gentlemen.
Would you like, can you come up so we can, everybody can hear you?
All the time. I'm going to, you know, can you make a few points on one question? One is, I think you refer to this as a situation where you might have heavy industrial as opposed to the commercial retail. My understanding from when the asphalt plant proposal went in or was put forth was that this was light industrial, and that was the reason that there had to be a special exception for what Mr. Pank wanted to do then. You know, so one is described as heavy industrial. It is not heavy industrial right now. It's, it's light industrial. And if it's limited to what, you can put in under light industrial zone.
Hi, Mr. Byerly. How are you? Good to see you again. We actually don't have a distinction in zoning between heavy or light. Our industrial zone allows for heavy commercial uses, which you typically don't see in a community commercial zone, and light industrial or light manufacturing. Now, all of those uses do have to pass the test of no objectional noise, odor, you know, extending past the lot line. So there's, there's no distinction of heavy or light industrial in the zoning.
So the REIT report is original application and special, special exception everywhere it's handled.
I, I believe, I, that wasn't actually a special exception. It was, it was.
Allowed by special exception. And what they did is they regrow the ordinance to forbid it by special exception.
So we don't have to worry about asphalt plants?
Clearly, it allowed use by special exception.
Well, it is the point we made that this was possible to be heavy industrial. As it stands right now, can heavy industrial, whatever is defined as heavy industrial, be put in there?
I would say...
There's a whole list of 100 uses, like heavy equipment sales and those type things that some people may consider heavy industrial. It all depends on demolition definitions. But if you look at the list of uses, it's 100-plus industrial uses. Warehouse, truck terminals.
So he was not inaccurate in saying it's heavy industrial.
It's industrial. He was inaccurate in saying it's heavy industrial. It is actually an industrial zone, but it incorporates both.
That's the point I was trying to make about that aspect. The other point is, when he talks about, well, there's no way to do a road study based on the fact that he doesn't have any idea what's going to go in there. At the previous meeting that was held, I believe, a number was put out there. I think it was 500 trips an hour for 12-hour day. Where did that come from? If there's no study that tells him how many trips there's going to be?
There was a number that was discussed. I can't remember where that...
It was actually...
Their number was not reported.
And it was provided, that based on general...
Absolutely. We used just a quick analysis of gross leasable building area of 297,500 square feet plus or minus would typically, usual and customary, have some level of traffic count. Big difference between putting 10 restaurants of 300 seat seats versus a 23,000-square-foot box of which 42,000 square feet is warehouse. That's my point.
So what you're telling this committee is that some tentative approval to move this along the way is going to have to bed placed before anybody's going to pay for the study on that. Is that right?
Well, it's, sir, it's not the question of pain.
No, not right. We can, we can require.
We can require.
But he says he can't do it.
We, we can do exactly what we've done today. Here is a number of approximate gross leasable area based on that. Little hard to market a plan when you don't have a special exception in process or entitlement or water or general public comment before you can get into a detailed merchandising plan that yields certain uses that you use to generate traffic studies.
So this, this panel cannot really, they may have a study.
We suggested to this, we suggested to this panel that they use a rough number as a basis.
He's not going to be able to get somebody to do a study.
But if it comes back...
So that says he has actual DCs lined up for that.
But if it comes back from the traffic study that he has to do X, Y, and Z to satisfy the town, the builder will have to do that, else he can't build.
Right.
Period. So he could say, I need to ride in Twin Arch. I need to build a superhighway. You need to build an airport. Whatever he wants to say, that's fine. But when it comes down to saying, okay, here's your plan. Here's what you have to do for traffic. And you can't do this, see you later.
Right.
It's that simple.
But we do have, we do have the option to require a traffic study first.
Yes.
And that is what our staff is recommending.
And it was one, I was going to come up with a few suggestions here. In the previous meeting, one of the steps that you believed that this plan did not incur with the existing master plan. And what Mr. Pye was pointing out was the issue of whether this should actually be addressed as being in a new master plan because the original plan called for the extension of Century Bowl or to go through a cycle, a circular cycle, which is not being, you know, presented. Now, was that person incorrect in saying that this agreement was to be incurred with the existing master plan?
We're in the process of updating our master plan, and we're not at the point in our discussions yet, but it can be part of our discussion.
And also, thank you.
The point is that the current master plan does show that connector road. Yes. And so this proposal, as shown here, is not in accordance with the current master plan.